Hello, everybody. We're back. Those that went for lunch and those that didn't, so we're at.
It's okay.
They do have a front. So let's call this meeting to order.
Second.
Very much.
We're in your office.
Okay, so.
Hello, everybody. Just want to kind of quickly introduce the new coordinator that's going to be at Aderondack, hired recently for the peer-to-peer program. Jeremy Durs. He's a Marine Corps veteran, ninety-nine to two thousand four.
Yes.
He's hitting the ground running, hard charging. He's going to tell you what he's got brewing for the program so far. But I want to get his name face out there so everybody can get used to seeing him around.
All right. Thanks, Ken. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jeremy Durs. I'm the new coordinator for the peer-to-peer program. Two of the initiatives that the state is really emphasizing that they want to see is more outreach in Washington County and an emphasis on military sexual trauma. Those are two things that are really hot-button topics that we're trying to really make sure that we pay close attention to. I'm going to be spending at least two days a week in Washington County. Different locations, and I have a feeling that I'm going to be going house to house, which is fine. What I'd really ask for you folks is to, if you see a veteran in need, if you hear about anybody that needs assistance, I'm here. Right now, there's certain things that I can do, certain things I can't. The grant is quite vague. It's quite broad in its purview, so I have lots of opportunities. As a matter of fact, I just sponsored an event for a veteran over at the Hudson Falls American Agent a couple of weeks ago. You know, trying to help veterans in any way we can. We're going to be sponsoring events that cater to, obviously, certain demographics. So, you know, for maybe Vietnam veterans, we'll do a bowling night. For younger veterans, we'll do sledding over at West Mountain. One of the key ways that I'll be advertising this stuff is using our Facebook page. So I know some veterans don't have Facebook, so that's why I'm going to be spending a lot of time off ground, you know. But if you'd like, it's called the Aderondack Peer-to-Peer Program. I have some flyers here that I'll leave behind. I can certainly, if anybody wants one. Yeah, sure. And I have more. So please take them. It's got. It's got our phone number, our email address. Really, we're not a clinical counseling, you know, entity. We're just peer counselors. And I've just recently hired one female veteran who is a victim of military sexual trauma. So she's going to be someone on my staff that's going to deal with issues like that because it's a difficult situation to talk about. So for these female veterans or male veterans that are victims of this type of stuff, it is a new initiative by the state and the federal government. So if you happen to see a veteran in need or happen to hear about someone and you need to make a home visit, that's where I'm here. I have no qualms about going out and introducing myself to someone, saying, hey, we've got this event going on in a couple of weeks. It's close by you. If you need a ride, let me know. Here's my number. You know, I'm really, I take this very seriously. Initiative that's near and dear to my heart. So I love the position, and I would ask all of you that if you happen to hear about anything, please let me know. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sure. Question, sir?
No, I just wanted to just comment. You commented about the Vietnam vet, Eric, the air veteran that's doing bowling. Most of us old guys in that category can't pick up a ball. We don't have enough strength, so.
Okay, well, and then that's one of those things where if someone says, hey, how about this type of event? Certainly.
Make your own sundae.
There you go.
As long as you have the strength enough to sprinkle the nuts on top of the ice cream, I'm certainly willing to hear any recommendations for any type of event. One major event we do have coming up next year. We've sponsored three days at Camp Chinatown for veterans and their families at no expense to you whatsoever. Now, they only have spots enough for a hundred, so it's going to go fast. But be on the lookout. I'm going to advertise it soon because I'm actually heading out to Camp Chinatown next week to just do a touring of the grounds and get some, you know, some framework of what they're going to do. And it's kind of cool because there's all sorts of different events. It'll be a nice weekend for us to celebrate our veterans who paid the ultimate sacrifice. And we're going to, that's one of the themes that we're going to have. So also, we've also sponsored a veterans' event at Hope Community Church. It's going to be on the fourth Thursday of every month. It's going to be dinner, open for families of veterans and everything. You go and you eat. And so the first event that we're doing, it's the end of January. I'm going to put the information out on Facebook, but I'll let you know now. We've got Chris Thompson coming to speak to us. He's a sergeant major in the Marine Corps, and he specializes in transition from military service to civilian service. So he's actually, we've sponsored him to come and speak to our veterans, and he's going to, you know, help them work on their resume, make sure that, because I actually spoke with a veteran, a Coast Guard veteran, at the Veterans Day Celebration they had at the community church. And he said, you know, I worked in the Coast Guard for, you know, served for twenty-five years, and when I got out, no one understood what my job was. And it really, what it is, is for civilians, it gets lost in translation. They just don't understand, you know, the types of responsibilities we have, the type of equipment we're working with. And, you know, I said this at the Veterans Day speech at ACC. I think, I think our country needs veterans more now than ever. Between our pride in our country, our willingness to show up and accomplish the mission, no matter what it takes to get it done, show up early, we show up in the right uniform, we're very often respectful unless we're dealing with one another. And that's just, you know, see, Ken and I were both Marines, so it's all good. We get some sailors in the room, things change. So please, please keep me in mind, if you have a family member or a friend or just happen to hear about someone, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. My schedule is extremely flexible, and I'm willing to travel just about anywhere in Washington County to take care of our veterans. They paid a tremendous sacrifice for all of us, so the least I can do is give them an ear to listen and buy them a cup of coffee, maybe some breakfast or lunch or whatever, whatever it takes, it's on me. So, so thank you. Thank you for your assistance, and hopefully I'll be hearing from you soon. Thank you.
Just so you all know, Camp Chinatown is located in Mattoff, Florida.
Well, that's why I chose that. I chose that specific location because it borders right there on both Florida and Washington Counties. Beautiful location. And, you know, we're discussing the events right now. There are going to be all sorts of things for younger veterans, older veterans, and their children, so, and their spouses. So it's going to be a great event. I'm very sad that we can only, you know, they put a ceiling at it because they're opening up the ropes course and stuff like that, and they want to make sure that they have adequate staff to keep it safe. So, but it's going to be a great event. Just keep an eye and ear out. Let me know if you need me. Thank you.
Make your own sundae, hopefully.
Yes, yes, I will bring you.
I have two things. One, the first, just an update on OCFS has changed the program year for the YDP. Program funding, that's funding that funds some rec programs as well as community-based organizations. So next, twenty twenty-three, they were going to switch to the federal year. So we have a gap, January first, September thirtieth, that we're going to have to do one wrap resource allocation process. So we can handle that. And then again, October, we'll do another one. But the benefit is that going forward for twenty-three, twenty-four, we'll know in advance what we're going to have to give municipalities. So in the event that it shows, for your planning purposes, you'll know. Last year, we didn't find out what our YDP funding was going to be until October. From the year, so programs operated on that. I know, I'm a promise. So anyway, it's a good thing. It's more work for us initially. You guys will be brought from the legislature for your approval. It's a good, it's good stuff. You know, and the sports education opportunity funding, I believe there will be some more there. It's hard, amazingly seen on the development. Every year we go in, with an additional ask for reappropriation at Senate. You know, it's additional one point four million. It's not a lot of money. We're always asking. So there's that. I just want to keep you updated on that. The second thing on the agenda was that I wanted to ask permission to overnight travel. We said, yeah, I've got a solution for that. Capital District, my state is going to do lifeguard training for us. So we'll have our own trainers in-house so that we don't, right now, we rely on community volunteers to do that. We've been very fortunate. But we'll have trained lifeguard instructors on staff so that we'll be able to do that. Hudson Falls has been great about giving us access to their pool. We'll support in their camps, I mean, Lake Lauderdale and Hewitt's Landing Programs. I don't have to ask you for overnight crew, so we're all set on that. All right. Let's find where. I'm sorry. How many will you have? I'm shooting for three on staff and one community volunteer.
Do they actually train?
Yeah, one, yeah, they'll be trainers. And one, one young lady is a member of our youth board. She happens to be Sembauri's daughter, but she's employed by the county at the Lake Lauderdale. So if we could arrange to make that work on the training, we'd actually build a program right at Lauderdale if we had to, because they've been running into shortages there. So, I mean, it's a great opportunity. And they lowered the price. Normally, it's four hundred dollars a person, capital district, but they, so they would do the whole track for eight hundred. So doesn't, I'm going to identify as many people as I can.
How old is the current student?
That's a good question. I believe it's two years on the lifeguard training and that the research is annually so on the CPR.
Yeah, they'll be, I think there's an annual online to keep the certification for that, for to be the trainer of the trainers.
Great process and process of revamping a lot of things because there's a shortage across the country of lifeguards. So it'd be nice having, you know, in-house trainers. Then also, that's not their own, they run juvenile programs. This is an addition to what they currently do. And the last thing, I wasn't on the agenda, it was additional business, but it's good additional business. We were notified by DCGS that we were awarded a grant for county pre-trial services. So our agency is a certified pre-trial services agency. So allegedly, it's in receipt of a check for a hundred and one thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. That I'd like to recognize it if possible and also use it for twenty twenty, offset twenty twenty expenses to kind of budget.
Any questions?
You're just going to take the revenue and let it ride?
I have to, I have to have a budget right to recognize it, and then you guys.
Well, I'll take a budget to revenue all day.
It's going to go to the county bottom, so, however, whatever's the easiest way.
If you don't need to increase your expenses, we can just let.
I don't.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That's all I have. All right, thank you very much.
I believe she said it to me, and I said it's mine.
Regina. Yes, Gina is unable to be here this afternoon. So she does have one item on the agenda, and she had a resignation from the Office for the Aging Advisory Council. That is Pat Prevo's of Whitehall. So she would like to end her unexpired term. Make the committee aware that they are currently looking for representatives from Whitehall, so that spot will remain vacant. And she's also asking to appoint Quinby Mahoney of Jackson, who has accepted the offer to be on the advisory council from the town of Jackson. That term will expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
Hello. Good morning. I have, there was one unresolved issue from last month when I wasn't able to be here, and I heard that it was closed from you, Supervisor Wilson. How many clicks did it take to get to the HEAP application? The website? I got that question right away. I went through it yesterday myself just so that I could be sure. So it takes one click to get to DSS from the main county page. So there's one, then one more to get to the state website. And then once you're there, it gets a little more in-depth because that's where you have to put in your information. So either you are a returning user to the state system, or you need to create a new account and it drives you through from there.
So. Two clicks.
Easier than a two-click. I wanted to make you aware of some funding updates that we have received. It must be the season, right, Mike? We have, both of these are funding streams that we've had in the past. We just keep on going for us, but there have been questions when we receive them, certainly initially, as to whether or not there'd be sustainability. So the Federal Child Abuse Prevention and Treatment Act, which is called CAFTA, comprehensive addiction recovery act of twenty sixteen, which is called CARA. So we call it CARA money. Is included in the state dyspo year, twenty-two to twenty-three, and a share of seventy thousand dollars has been allocated to Washington County. We would have already included that in our budget. That funding helps us improve our response to families and infants that are affected by substance use disorders. So we have a contract through VHSN or General Health Consultant to go out in the field with caseworkers, and then provides also additional referrals and works with the parents themselves on a plan of safe care for the children that are in there. It's the same amount that we have been receiving. Yep. Yep. And also through OCFS, we provided an allocation of forty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty for the continued participation in the Safe Harbor New York Program for twenty twenty-three. That is slightly more than we received last year, and we utilize that funding to contract with the youth alternative set, a safe or safer coordinator. Mike generally will be the one that reports out on data and finding that is a result of assessing risk and providing the referral services to the victims or average of human trafficking.
So that was budgeted. To amend that number or?
They don't need to amend it. And then moving on, I really want to keep giving you the information on housing. You might get tired of it at a certain point, but I think that it is really important. We're in a really bad state of affairs right now. So I provided you the email last month, some data on the, what the snapshot looked like at a point in October for the people that we had housed in motels and shelters. And I went through the full list again earlier this week, yesterday. Earlier this week. And the numbers are pretty much the same. I was quite surprised by that. It's just slightly variation. There are a hundred and thirty-one Washington County residents that are currently receiving temporary housing assistance. The majority of them are in motels. When I asked roughly how many motel rooms is that for us, I was told that it's eighty. Those are by no means all located in Washington County. The average weekly rate to pay for a single person in a motel room is four hundred dollars. And at that point, when they're doing it that way, that would be about sixty dollars a night. However, if we place somebody and it's not for that weekly rate, we don't know how long they're going to be placed or becoming new to us, we are paying the nightly rate, which is between a hundred and thirty and a hundred and fifty dollars a night. When we double bunk people, which we do if they're single adults, savings then for having two people in a room really ends up being about fifty dollars per person that is saved for the weekly rate. So we are still paying a considerable amount at that point, but it is a savings, and it is the only way that we are able to provide as much bed space as we are right now. One of the things that I found very striking when I was going through this is a multi-page spreadsheet, so I was just trying to dig information out of it. But out of the one hundred and thirty-one people that are temporarily, right now, fifty-eight of them fall in the age range of twenty-six to forty-five, and I was shocked. I would have expected them to be in the younger adult category, which many of us might think that twenty-six to forty-five is younger adult. But even younger than that. The entire range from zero to twenty-five was only thirty-eight people or forty-eight people, so it's ten, ten more in that twenty-six to forty-five. And there are thirty-four people that are under seventeen. Sixty-two of our, of the one hundred and thirty-one placed without children. But there are twenty-two families. Out of the twenty-two families, eleven of them are two-parent families, which also surprised me. Twenty-three of the cases have earned or unearned income, so when that gets budgeted in, they have to then use a portion of their pay to pay for the hotel as well. We are contracting currently for two beds at the Shelter to Saratoga. That's something that I had talked to you about in the past. And the way that it was computed for me this time, when I asked, I was told that it's roughly sixteen thousand dollars a week county share paid for this population. When they did it for me last month, they said nineteen thousand. The rates have gone down some because it's winter, but it doesn't make sense to me to go down that much, but you get the idea. It's very expensive to a lot of people, and it's expensive.
Fifty-eight or twenty-six, they wouldn't say forty-five. Do you know how many of them are actually employed?
I don't, if somebody does. Our staff do.
Sure, it goes with the amount of work that's out there, why, you know, it just seems like they should have been employed.
Well, and that was, again, information that I. That was information that I tried to provide, or that I did provide, rather, last month, that, yes, there are signs everywhere for hiring, but they aren't necessarily full-time jobs and rarely probably are the ones that we're seeing on the signs. A convenience store or a restaurant are vague time jobs. And to be able to have a sustainable income, they'd have to have a few of those jobs together so that scheduling, particularly for somebody that doesn't have transportation, would be very difficult for them to be able to be self-sufficient. So I had said last month that I would share more information on alternate funding streams that could be used to create affordable housing. So I do have a handout I prepared. This is really just summarizing for you the different funding streams that the state has available. I'm sure that there are some other grants and such. So anyway, these are the different streams that are available. Only the first one actually provides funding for capital, grants, loans. Many of these things would be leveraged together if somebody was to put in land for opening up some sort of a new shelter. Access to any of them, you know, it's complicated. You'd have to decide what kind of model of housing you wanted, and then put in a concept paper to the state. You need to have a partner, not partners, to be able to work with to do that, obviously, securing the location. And all of the rest of that is a very big issue or hurdle to have to conquer. But I, again, I'm bringing this to you because I'd like you to understand and agree that this is a problem for us. I don't have a solution to all of this. I don't think anybody really has a solution to end homelessness entirely, but the problem of us having to put people in motels and having them further away from housing is another issue. We can continue on the way that we are and also we sort of ride out this trend and get back to the point where our numbers are much smaller as they look more COVID. But I think it's going to take, it's going to take some time, and it's going to be very expensive.
So numbers stay the same. These same people, or do we have a lot of?
Some of them are the same people, for sure, but there is turnover. Yes. And so trying to get people into apartments that maybe have opened up or whatever, that is a process that's being worked on. We do try to develop relationships or have relationships with the landlords. People that had all of those months with no payment and, you know, finally got people evicted or whatever, it's taking them, if you're in time to decide if they want to get back into it. They also are raising the rents incredibly. They're very high, and so for us to put somebody into an apartment that we know there's no way they're going to be able to afford to move forward, that's not something that, you know, the state would even approve us to do, quite frankly. So I don't have a solution. I can say, though, that I do have more hope for the moving forward with the Open Door Mission. I had shared with you a couple of months ago that we had been notified by the Open Door Mission that they were going to provide code blue shelter for people during the cold months, and that was something that very much concerned me at the time. I had said I didn't know what we would do with them. It ended up then, and I shared with you afterwards, that they did end up deciding that they would provide it. They are, however, working closely with Salvation Army with the thought that this coming year Salvation Army will be the one to provide the code blue housing. And Open Door will focus more on their transitional shelter beds. Right now, they do have a transitional program, but it's quite limited, and they plan on making openings that up to be somewhere in the vicinity of fifty beds total. And they're hoping to be able to open that up in January. So I don't know whether they'll be successful in that or not, but they have approached me about contracting for a sort of number of beds. And right now, I have no doubt at all that we could fill beds. And I think that we would be able to do so with fairly neutral funding, you know, based on what we're already paying for hotels and knowing that the assistance that the people receive through this program, they would be able to go through that cycle much more quickly and get into some sufficiency situations. I am worried about whatever it would be like moving forward, so I guess at the very least, with your support, I would go forward and have a contract. But I would want to work with Roger on clauses that could allow us to reduce the number of beds that we contract for, which is.
So you have contracts with the motels?
We do not actually have contracts with motels.
And if you did contract with shelter, would there be a saving over a motel or is it the same price that you know you have?
The, the outcomes from working with the transitional programs are supposed to be, are better because they are working with them. They're providing them direct case management and assistance to work on whatever sort of background issues led them to being homeless. And so they would be homeless for shorter periods of time and then be able to get into a situation that hopefully they would then, you know, come back around close again.
So you'd get more than a shelter you're going to get.
With transitional, yes.
Issues. Like hotels, transportation.
Yes.
Giving people back.
This, the Open Doors location is on a bus route in Glen Falls. So they would be able to give the transportation to others. So it would not be for families themselves. Yeah. Any shelter solutions that are available in our area are only to single adults. So in the Open Door, I don't know how many beds. Totally open door. Actually, I just met, I don't know if I said this at the beginning, but I met with Jamie when he from Open Door this morning. And he said that it's largely just women in Washington. He's not really had much experience with Saratoga. Asking counties as well. The availability to us would make a big difference there. He did say that county is talking about contracting for ten beds. When they expand, once they're able to open up their doors and provide that much more space. We could, we could definitely fill ten right now. In what I've been seeing for the last six months. Yes. Getting better sense. As transportation. It's on that labor plus two N. Yes. Yep, we would, we would select who we sent there. Have the people that, you know, demonstrated that they wanted to have change, wanted to work on new issues. Which is what we're doing right now. For shelters to Saratoga. Is it would be a new contract? It would be. So you might want to read last week. Any other questions? Your voting. So we're going to switch down to Tina.
I don't know. Yeah, I think we can do that. Back to the mental health.
Kind of rather good, Tina.
There is no help.
Well, you know what? If there's anyone that can help. So I'll make that motion.
Any questions?
Hi.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. That was a great.
Let's see. So the first thing we have on the agenda, the last month I had brought forward the request to, brought to bid for vehicles for our department. We did receive those bids back. And the least expensive on there were the Nissan robes. And they were twenty-nine thousand eight sixty-six. So we had requested two of those. So I wanted to request permission to accept that bid.
And do we have a second?
And we are reading right now, the State Department of Health. We did put a request into them for the approval of those purchases. We have not heard back from them yet. They're a little delayed in getting back to us our questions right now. So obviously we're going to move on with that until we have that permission from the state.
So one more with finance and then maybe over.
Because it would have to go to the board because of the amount being more than fifty thousand. The positive thing with this is the grant that this was under, I think, when we had presented this, the grant was supposed to be done March thirty-first. They have extended that grant to December thirty-first. So it does give us more time to.
Expect that to continue. As the political appointment process continues. So also.
Danielle.
Yeah, you know what, what's the turnaround time for many orders?
Do we not deliver?
Yes.
Oh, they do? Oh, that's good. And I guess my next question would be, is their cars are coming out of service? Will they go elsewhere or are they just willing to go?
So we'll give two of our cars back to Carpool, the ones that we currently have in our fleet. So I'm not sure what their plan would be for those cars, but we'll be returning two to the carpool.
Once you turn them over to Carpool, then that you're turning. But in theory, two would drop out of the.
Someone.
Or whatever. Or rust out.
So I'll favor.
The next item I have is a staffing pattern change request. I did not bring this during the budget time because the retirement was just announced in the last couple of weeks. So this is something new. We did get approval at the last personnel meeting to backfill the senior account clerk. That's who's retiring. And doing that, it kind of causes a domino effect. So we're going to be filling that internally, which would leave him a clerk position open within our department, but we'd like to fill that with a clerk versus a account clerk based on the duties that the person will be doing. The other, it is a lower grade. But we would like to have the position be forty hours versus thirty-five based on what the person will be doing. We do have another clerk in our office who is our receptionist, who's also forty hours. This person will be her direct backup and will be leading, relieving some of the stuff she has to do at our, our switchboard, which is constant. Home is constant there. So there's not a lot of time to gather what's done. So she'll be leading some of her stuff, but she'd also have to cover when she's off, which is during our business hours, which is open. It's actually, even though it's a lower grade, because it's, it's ten more hours pay period, it's actually about, it's a couple thousand dollars more in the budget, but we do have the money within our budget to cover that. And the majority of what this person does is either covered under our state.
Any other questions?
The next item is we have two separate agreements right now with Cambridge Valley Rescue Squad. One is to help us out at our COVID clinics and the other one is to do COVID testing. They're both set to expire on twelve thirty-one. We would like to request to extend the one agreement to, for them to be able to assist at our COVID clinics. They come into observation for us for the people that have to leave fifteen minutes after. So we're looking to have that extended through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, just that one agreement. It is. And then the next item, the COVID report. I just wanted to bring you up to date on some changes that are happening at the state level. Currently, they, during, when COVID first hit, within the six first six months of COVID, they gave us a software system that we were using to document all of our COVID cases would come into there. As well as our documentation, when we were calling people every day, which is still happening, some of our, our public health specialists. So that system they've announced is going away. As of twelve thirty-one, that'll no longer be available to the counties to be able to use that. So in saying that, there really is, I'm not saying it's not possible, but there's no efficient way for us to be able to capture the amount of cases that we have within the county. With home tests coming in as well as the lab tests coming in. So I just want to make you all aware of that. We still have other metrics that we record on. We have wastewater surveillance. We have the state metrics, which is our percent positivity rate. We always know what our hospitalization numbers are. The hospitals report to us. You know, and we'll, we'll still get lab confirmed cases as well. So we'll know if there's, if there's a spike going on within our community. So I just wanted to put that out there that we won't really be able to give you a great number after the end of the year as far as number of cases.
You know, I saw. Or nonetheless, it's right there. There's other things out there.
Right. And they have talked about that on some of our calls. The state is working on updating their systems so it can capture more than just contact tracing for COVID.
I don't think so. Talked about Dallas. Looking, is it COVID? Which one is? I hope they don't do away with it. Point is, it's a great tool, right? Talking about data, data telling.
And then we do have meetings coming up in the next couple of weeks with the state as far as what their expectations are going to be about the local health departments when it comes to COVID. So it's kind of all up in the air right now as far as, you know, what we'll be doing after the end of the year. And saying that, we also have a senior public health specialist that we're using some of our COVID grant money for. The person is not a county employee, but we have given money back to the state on one of our grants to fund this position. She's the one that's making the calls to people that come up positive that are requesting a call from COVID. Her time period is also supposed to expire on twelve thirty-one. We do have the opportunity to extend her and we do have the grant money to do that. But I'm kind of hesitating on that a little bit because I want to wait and see what the state has to say in the next couple of weeks. Whether we extend. Past that and she is using that software every day. That's going to go away. Right, right. So we would, we would still be able to give her cases that we get through our, we'll still get lab confirmed cases through our state system. But we would then have to turn them over to her, her field of call. Right now she has access to that system. So, so change is coming. I'll keep you updated.
So with a lack of that software after the first of the year, that's, I believe, the reporting software that the Deputy Director of Public Safety uses to give us something.
Right. Which he gets from us. Yeah.
Right. So if he doesn't have that, I believe you can come up with the numbers, but it's a manual, it's a lengthy process.
Right.
I would not recommend, I would not recommend staff hours and expense.
You and Dana.
I mean, we're talking about expending resources or piece of data. Where I come from is data is relevant. Helps us to understand.
And like I said, they have other metrics and obviously we're still going to be watching COVID. It's not going away.
Right.
We've actually seen a spike just this morning. This morning. So, yeah, and that's how it's going to be. It's going to be that before. So I just want to make sure you're all aware of the test system is going to be.
Yeah. So if we, so if we have a tick up, that it'd be able to give us that information so we can react accordingly.
Exactly. Right. We're still monitoring the wastewater. We're still looking at the CDC metrics. You know, we're still looking at hospitalizations. So, you know, we still have that, that data, which is out there. We have our positivity rate. The next item is the Community Health Assessment Summary. This is a project that we have to do for the state every three years. Really the purpose of this to assess the health of our community. We've been working for the year. We've done a stakeholder survey, a community survey. We look at a lot of data that's out there on the state dashboards. So in doing that, the two priority areas that has kind of come to light, which is not different from the previous cycle, was the substance abuse and mental health and then also preventing and maintaining chronic disease. So those will really be the two priority areas. Now that we're not going to be told to see on other things, but those are the two that we have to write our plan around. So in, that report is due by the end of January to the state. So I'm sorry, by the end of December. So in January, I'll be presenting that and by then it'll be on our county website and I'll, I'll make sure it's distributed to all of you. And then the last thing, actually not the last thing. I do have a couple of things that are miscellaneous. We are anticipating our move over to Berwyn. We have a lot of stuff in our building. One of, or one item of that stuff is expired medical supplies. Some of it we would have to pay to get rid of because it's fringes and our offices within the county reach out to us and they can use expired medical supplies.
Oh, good.
So I'm, we had, I had talked to Roger and we had asked that, that to send us a letter requesting the expired medical supplies and, you know, make sure they're, they are expired. We have not received that letter yet. I want to be able to bring it here. We don't have it yet. So I guess what I'm looking for is permission to kind of move forward with trying to get rid of these expired medical supplies without having to pay.
Do you know if that clinic was big enough to take all of it or should we be reaching out? Could we, we have connections to all of them. Should we be reaching out to get rid of more? Well, we should be telling everybody, give me a shot again. Yeah. I don't want to play favorites, you know. But I mean, certain ones want different sizes. I mean, you'd have to let them know what.
What we have.
No, but I think if you could be helping somebody, it's a good deal.
Right. Eliza has the list, I believe, or working on the list of getting what we exactly have as far as expired medical supplies. Yeah.
Then you can play first come, first served. And some of them might not be competing. Somebody might want a certain size, might not want another.
Yes, you know, a little bit of demand is.
Yeah.
So we
A motion.
Okay, and I'll favor.
For the other in this. The flu numbers, I'm sure you've probably seen it on the news. You know, our county is no different from what's going on across. I just wanted to kind of put it in perspective a little bit. As of eleven nineteen of this year, we've had fifty-two cases of flu. As of eleven nineteen last year, we had seventeen. So we're about three times as many flu cases right now. And actually this morning, we had actually more flu cases than we have COVID. So just want to, you know, make sure everyone's aware that is widespread across the state. So just to bring it to your attention, we still do have flu vaccine available. So.
Weather actually, because, because everybody's out and about.
Yeah.
It's cooler. So
Yeah, it's just a lot.
Being milder probably is worse.
And then the other thing I just wanted to bring up, because I believe we're going to have to sign another agreement, our fellowship program, which right now we have two fellows on staff. We did receive notification yesterday, I believe it was official notification, that they are extending that program to June thirtieth of twenty twenty four. So I would like to request permission to accept the notification to that grant. There is sufficient funds in there to be able to do that and keep the two on that we have. And then we're looking at other applications that are put in as well. So.
May only stay so long. You have to, is somebody do?
No, they can stay on for as long as the fellowship program lasts.
So an opening is there for us to.
So they say.
They do. Yes. It's been a wonderful program so far.
I hope you're lining them up for future prospects.
Yeah, I hope so.
Tina, yesterday I, I attended a workshop over at Glenswells Hospital and it was in a, I think you're familiar with the one I saw.
Yeah, Elizabeth was there.
Was there again. They talked about a significant amount of money, they said significantly, they give a dollar. It was set aside specifically for Washington County to handle some different programs. Can you bring us up to date on that?
What was that? Can I?
Can you bring up what the amount, might it be, if you know what it is?
I'm not aware of that.
You're not aware of that?
No.
They went to Elizabeth on it.
Did they say which department they were going to be distributing it to?
No, but I think it was along the tobacco and substance abuse issue where we were at the highest county in the area for that. So it had been isolated for us to utilize it.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. I'm not, they haven't contacted me about that funding. So I'm not sure what that is.
Okay.
No, Truman, she didn't. Yeah. Yeah.
Earlier.
And I can talk to Elizabeth too. We were talking a little bit about that meeting this morning and she didn't bring that up. So I can talk.
The lady made a specific point of saying, and, and Washington County money was set out separately and had a significant amount of money because of the reasons that we're the highest in the area.
Yes. Yeah. Right. And that is one, again, be one of our priority areas as well. With our community health improvement to adjust the smoking rate in Washington County. So we want to go back to both of the partnerships.
I'm not a vote.
Talking about fellows and filling positions, did you want to mention that the uni negotiations are continuing with NICE now, public health and nurses? We have negotiations next week. With any luck, we'll be able to bring something to finance executive session with the labor. So that's ongoing. The other thing I wanted to mention are the opioid settlement funds that the county has received. We've mentioned it a couple of times in the past, the settlement, the county attorney brought it up once or twice. Those funds have started to be received by the county. Internally, we have been discussing. Carol Lee Clary was part of that, talking to some of the department heads that already offer programs related to opioid abuse. And so the conversation so far is to see what those departments can actually use some of the funding for. If that's possible to offset either some expenses they currently have or to offset some of the programs or initiatives that they may be able to offer. So I guess we're unofficially doing a internal, internal RFP, just to get some information from departments, see what they can use for funding and what programs they can use that. Once we get that information, I don't know if it's something that you would like to have come to this committee to decide on how the funding is used. If we have money left over after we see what internal, internally we can use. I guess the next process may be to do a RFP out and see what services can be offered outside of county services.
So are there stipulations as to how these funds?
Some are, actually, there's a large amount of the money that is restricted and there are guidelines. There's also some money that's unrestricted. So far, we've received a hundred and fifteen thousand of unrestricted funds and a hundred and fifteen thousand of the restricted. Those are going to be ongoing, not, that's not the amount that's going to be coming monthly, the amount, actually, I think that's annually. That that comes and it goes right till twenty twenty, I'm sorry, twenty thirty eight, started in spring of twenty twenty two and goes right to twenty thirty eight. They're larger amounts at the beginning, but then will continue annually in smaller amounts.
So programs sustain. Long term. It'll be like. Yeah.
Or maybe the problem goes away.
It'll be like.
The other information that I had that I just wanted to mention, the sheriff's office has been involved in some of the discussions that we've had. And Lieutenant Hardy did offer me some information, what I thought was kind of interesting and scary all at once. They have information on the Washington County, the Washington County website, which is the OD dashboard. And the recording that they have does not include all of the agencies within the county because some don't report. But it does include all of the sheriff's offices, our sheriff's office reporting for non-fatal overdoses. There were forty five in twenty twenty two and there were twelve fatal overdoses. And that's just what our sheriff's office reports. Again, there's, I'm sure that number's higher because we don't have reporting from police departments.
So restrictive, obviously, is easy choice, right? Programs supporting substance abuse. So is the other street.
Yes.
What I would, what I would ask the committee to consider today is while they're developing the plan and doing the interim RFP, I'd like to have you consider setting up, which is a finance, to create a reserve for this money. So that's, it's a protective piece of fund balance while we're working out what we want to do with it. Let's get it in a safe place and it's on. I would, I would also respectfully ask you to consider placing that just the restricted, but the under. Thinking that a little bit more since they're so, because of even, even a hundred fifty twice may not be enough to tackle some stuff we need to do, but a hundred fifty by itself definitely isn't going to go very far.
So as an example, unprotected, unpredictable in-house care that every once in a while you get hit with it, it'll come back with eighty, ninety thousand.
It varies. It's such a ambiguous, I mean, category for us to track. I mean, level opioid users that may be incarcerated in jail that have other health issues related that we could get them released under supervision, we can defer the cost a hundred percent local to twenty five percent local. So the, the dollars that are restricted, unrestricted, approved uses are for treatment, as you mentioned, prevention and other, other uses on the category of promising evidence-based approaches. So there are things that, in discussion with Tammy and Tina and the sheriff as well is that the county currently is expending a good deal of money. Like we've had opioid users in motels that's costing the county money. We've had neonatal support by Tina's department for opioid users. And then our office with anywhere from EM to supervision, we have those costs. But we hope through the process, we're going to be able to evaluate the continuum, identify where the voids are and that discretionary money might be able to use in there. But we, we have some work to do.
Until such time as we have that kind of information, we're, we just need to establish that.
Get it right away.
It all goes there. Time comes. And then it will take more to action to do something with it, which, why not?
Because.
Because one of the things you may be interested in is where the rules is, that one of the things that came up in the conversations that, you know, at least like little shelter bubble, don't think about is the first responders that deal with these OD cases. There is no support for the, the trauma that they take home with them from their first line of defense. So there's a lot of things that even I had not any clue was even a thing. I didn't know. Even neonatal was a thing. So I think that there's far more. So to, to do just a restriction, I think would go very far. I would respectfully ask you to consider both the restricted and unrestricted.
Another question.
Just, we understand what we're doing here. It's two hundred and thirty thousand. And then you started to explain it and you weren't quite sure. After that, it's going to be one payment a year to nineteen or two thousand and thirty.
Well, there's several different settlements, Mr. Shaw. One of them was a one time, someone structured. So it, it won't be that number ongoing every year?
Right. I understand that, but it needs to be subsequently smaller.
Well, the schedule that we initially got, it's a distributor payment schedule and it's a Janssen payment schedule. The distributor payment schedule is roughly eleven to fourteen thousand dollars a year. It kind of varies going forward. And that's really unrestricted. Yeah.
So that's still some that aren't settled. So, so this is going to be an ongoing thing because it's going to be coming in just like the tobacco.
So for example, you know, treasurer was telling me earlier, they received, or he received an amount of twenty two thousand five hundred and twenty two dollars for OAG, which is restricted. I don't even have that scheduled. So the money that we're receiving really isn't lining up with the, in the schedule that we initially received unless there's other schedules out there.
Some of it's flowing directly to the state. So what happens usually is counties and localities get on the bad wagon first. When they see this, some tractions being, your state attorney general is chucking, suck all the air out of the room, get the money out of them. So now a lot of the money is going directly to the state and they will, they will hold some for their purposes. They will hold some for like regional grant purposes and then they'll give us a little bit of what's left directly. So there's going to be a lot. It's still swirling, you know, Purdue just settled the Sackler family. There's a bunch of places in bankruptcy. They're still fighting those out. I get stacks of paper every week. All those filings as well. So it's going to be an uncertain revenue stream. Like, you know, if you say it could be X number of dollars a year, for X number of years, it's not going to be like tobacco. It's not going to be that kind of certainly. And the only reason we got a certainty in tobacco is because we securitized it in order for a guaranteed revenue stream. That again, is dependent on how many cigarettes you sold and everything. The restrictions in this case are, I think, in direct response to the tobacco thing where we use our tobacco money to build that local building next door and not a lot of tobacco. Want that to happen this time around. So now the severely restricted way.
So with that being said, the motion on the floor, that's just the two thirty or that could have been for, I don't think any other money that's going to get, right?
That's a late question.
Someone clarified that. One is, all of it goes. Until such time as we determine what to do or to use for it. And I do believe, I would recommend how it's part of the motion that, well, it's kind of the client's.
Yes.
The motion is to move finance to establish this, but also it's to all recognize a role. Because we don't know where we're going to receive this money.
We already have.
We can roll it over. So the reason that I want the reserve is so long.
So it rolls over automatic.
Reserve rule? Yeah. By selfish, we wanted to kind of get it from the house.
So that was your motion, Kate, that is, that it takes in everything as it comes in to go with it.
So all, all receipts will go into this reserve. You act on removing. Okay.
There will be two different.
Just sort of when I draft.
Sides to that same reserve, right?
Sorry.
But there will be two sides to that reserve account, unrestricted, unrestricted. Is there a separate within the reserve? Right. So we have separate, so you can track it or we have two separate.
I'm tracking it now.
Right. So we have a count. Just one account for.
They're, they're, they're actually combined. I actually created separate revenue accounts. So we'll all be able to tell what being that's, and which funding stream.
So we have a motion in a second. Any other questions? I'm in favor.
Hi. That's all right.
Go ahead.
You can vote. My, my question is, where does restrictions come from? Is it a result of litigation or?
Yeah. Bring the sub, bring the sub.
So I'm in favor.
Hi.
Thank you. Anything from the floor? It's very good. Thank you very much.